Alderman Fisk. Alderman Brathwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Here. Alderman Burrus.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 9, 2015, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is mayor's public announcements and proclamations. Sending condolences to the family of Dave Schmidt, the mayor of Park Ridge, who died very unexpectedly at age 57 of a heart attack, and who was a member with me of the Northwest Municipal Conference. Also, the family of Lloyd Mayday. Lloyd ran Mayday Brothers Car Repair and Gas Shop. He was a member of the High School Boosters Association for many years while his children went through the high school. And one of the last times I saw Lloyd was at Dominix, when we had Dominix, and he had a huge cart full of turkeys that he was, in typical Lloyd fashion, taking to some shelter and soup kitchen. So my condolences to Katie and to all his children. And then, on a happier note, for Women's History Month, I have a proclamation. Whereas women of every age, race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the city by contributing a significant portion in the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the city by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the city, and whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our city, and whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements which create a more fair and just society for all, and whereas on Saturday, March 14, 2015, the city of Evanston celebrates the extraordinary progress of all women. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as Women's History Month in the city of Evanston in celebration of the extraordinary progress of all women. It is Betsy Jenkins here. Here she is.
How many men does it take to take a picture of women?
City manager, that concludes my report. Do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I have two announcements. First, Ilda Capricioso, the Assistant to the City Manager, is here to talk about Evanston Day in Springfield.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, City Manager Bob Gwitz, and Clerk Terrier. Ilda Capricioso, Assistant to the City Manager. Evanston Lobby Day, we have set a date, and we're very excited. It is April 14. We will be leaving from Evanston that morning and then driving down with residents and community leaders and business leaders to rally down in Springfield for making sure that our legislators and other legislators and governor will be able to listen to our residents about some of the issues that are affecting our community. So we really want to encourage residents from all across our community to participate. We usually have some Northwestern students and Evanston Township High School students participate in the event, so we're hoping that we'll also have a good contingency from those coming as well. This year, we're doing things a little bit differently. We had a luncheon last year, and this year, we're going to be having an evening reception, which is hosted by Northwestern, where we'll have speaking. The mayor will be speaking, and then, as well as the president of Northwestern University, and then just a casual reception with legislators and others. So encourage you to attend, and I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Ilda, the governor is very good at meeting with people and reaching out to two mayors. Have we asked him to meet with us?
We have.
Okay. Thank you.
And how, if someone wants to come along, how do they sign up?
Absolutely. So they go to the cityofevanston.org website forward slash Lobby Day. They can also contact 311 and make a reservation through 311.
And how much does it cost?
$65. Thank you.
And is it clear we want everybody to come? You don't have to represent some group or other?
Right. You do not have to represent a specific organization or business. You can just be a regular resident to head down to Springfield with us. And we encourage that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ilda. On Saturday, we celebrated We Love Evanston Day. As you know, we've been working hard with the World Wildlife Federation's Earth Hour Challenge. Charlize Agnew, who is one of our community engagement specialists, really was the spearhead of putting that day together, and I've asked Charlize to come today and give a brief overview of really the tremendous outpouring of support we received from the Evanston community. Charlize, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, City Manager Bob Gwitz, and Deputy City Clerk. I'm Charlize Agnew, Community Engagement Specialist, and I am pleased to be here tonight to give an update on the We Love Evanston Day and our quest to become named the most lovable, sustainable city throughout the world. So on Saturday, September, or, September, geez. On Saturday, March 7, we created this day to help boost sales for local businesses, create awareness about the We Love Evanston campaign, and to create fun photo opportunities for community members to share on social media using the hashtag #WeLoveEvanston. So throughout the day, we created three main events. There was a photo opportunity with Ronald McDonald that took place on Dempster and Dodge. There was Willie the Wild Kid at Little Beans, gave the kids the opportunity to kind of meet the high school mascot before it's their turn to kind of cross that stage there. And then, we had a special water treatment facility tour, and I would like to give a special thanks to the Utilities Department for hosting that. They had mentioned that 33 people were in attendance on that tour, which was more than their typical tour that they normally hold. So it was kind of great to see people kind of come on out and give some recognition to Evanston and become more involved in what we have to offer. So here are some photos from the We Love Evanston Day.
Who's that guy out there on the right?
The ICMA Fellow, Jonathan Williams-Kenzel. He filled in for me on that day, and he took a great selfie with Ronald. And so here, you can just see that there was just a lot of community support. There was balloons inside and outside of the facility at McDonald's. So it was great. We also received comments on Instagram with people driving by wanting to know what was happening. So it sparked a lot of community interest. Then we also have photos here from the Willie the Wild Kid event at Little Beans Cafe. I thought it was kind of neat because they actually have a lighthouse constructed there, so the kids were taking photos in front of the lighthouse with Willie. And so we also had the police department. Some officers came on in while serving their bead and took some photos with Willie as well. And then, here are some photos from the water treatment facility plant tour. So you can see it was a packed room, seemed to be really engaged, and everyone actually got a free water bottle at the end of it. So that was great. Here's just a slide where you'll see kind of the promotion that was done with the businesses who participated. They really took to this whole event and were really excited about it. As you can see, they did sidewalk boards. Space in Evanston also held a special sale where they made that shirt specifically for We Love Evanston Day. And then, at the bottom right, you'll actually see someone holding up a sign saying We Love Evanston. The owner's father have noticed this, and Evanston created that sign just for the day. So it's something that they were really looking forward to leading up to it, and it was great. The outpour on social media was something that, I think, speaks volumes for their excitement and their dedication to our community. We had 30 participating businesses and organizations kind of jump on board, some earlier than others, but we were certainly glad that they had gotten involved. I know Temperance and Peckish Pig were one of the final two to kind of jump on board there with their special savings and events that they were hosting as well. So where do we stand now out of all of this? So I know when Catherine spoke to you guys, I think it was either last week, we were in fourth place, and we had the lowest volume of tweets, and Toluca, Mexico, was beating us well. We have some encouraging news. We are now behind Paris in third place, and that number of 1,972 tweets has been exceeded. We are currently at over 2,000 tweets as of five minutes ago. So definitely keep tweeting, using the hashtag #WeLoveEvanston for those of you sitting on the board who use social media regularly. So I think we're seeing tremendous growth. Couple of numbers I also want to kind of...
Excuse me, Alderman Wilson has a question.
Sure.
Maybe just a suggestion. Everybody at the high school does Twitter, right?
Yes.
So maybe if we had, you know, the two-minute tweet from the high school, we'd have like another 2,000 or 3,000 in one shot.
Try mentioning The Good Wife, and you can have several thousand.
So maybe we can reach out to the high school and maybe get them to do, you know, lunchtime, everybody in the school do a tweet or something like that.
Right. And we actually have reached out to ETHS as well as Northwestern. We've been working with the ETHS Alumni Association, so they've been sending out a couple of tweets as well, and they send out reminders via their Facebook group. But I have been in works with the Community Service Center there at the high school to pass out buttons and so forth, but it's completely on their radar. And we have gotten a couple of tweets from the high school themselves, but not the students. So we're certainly trying to engage them via Twitter. That's totally their tool that they're using now in high school, but we are definitely working on that.
Well, before, and before you leave the slide...
Sure.
It's important to mention that there's going to be two measures of this. One is going to be on the sheer number of tweets. The other is going to be the per capita.
Right.
So if you look at Paris, at 2.2 million residents, and us at 75,000, our per capita numbers, we're feeling pretty good on the per capita side. Where is Balapapan?
It is in Indonesia.
In Indonesia?
Yes.
Okay. Because they weren't even on the radar.
No, they weren't. And so I finally took a scroll through, and they were kind of lagging behind, and all of a sudden, I kept seeing this increase in Twitter usage, and sure enough, they're beating Paris. So just...
It's theirs.
Yeah, probably their high school, that's right. But so something to keep in mind before we hit that 1900 number, we were at 1702 before, the day before the We Love Evanston event. So it did bring a lot of awareness via social media, got people excited, we saw a lot more photos via Instagram as well. So it's something that we're going to continue to push, but we're doing very well. And so it's an exciting time. People definitely love our city, and it's just great for community engagement, kind of getting out there. So just a couple of last reminders. Definitely keep voting daily. You can go to visit weloveevanston.org to vote, or you can use the hashtag #WeLoveEvanston on Twitter and Instagram if you have a public account. You can also sign up for reminders, which are very helpful considering that you can vote every day. I use them, and they come every day at 2:00. And so here are just some photos of other community involvement. We have the McDonald's sign, which Alderman Rainey, you had brought up in the last council meeting that you were really excited about. So this is the McDonald's located on Howard Street. The Robert Crown marquee also has Vote Today, WeLoveEvanston.org. And then, the Evanston Township High School digital marquee also has some verbiage as to getting votes out there and promoting the URL. So are there any questions about We Love Evanston?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we've been working on this for several weeks now. You know, Charlize has been the engine behind the community engagement piece for this. So Charlize, thank you. Your creativity, just the number of businesses that you've been able to get involved, and the number of community organizations has really been outstanding. So thank you very much. Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is public comment. I'm going to call the first four names. You each have three minutes to speak, and I'm going to do my best with some of the handwriting. Junad Riske, Jim Isell, Joel Siegel, and I Can't Tell Weissbar.
Junad Riske. Once again, I feel the city Economic Development Department is not being competent on this project of 1571 maple. For the record, I'm a 30-year resident here, and I've lived in northeast Evanston for that 30 years. My issue is that the staff continues to sell off our assets basically for pennies on the dollar and claims that these are public benefits to justify things. As I said, leasing in the P&amp;D meeting, leasing the parking spaces is giving away our money. There's a troubling thing here. It's what I would call the collusion of private interests with the city, and we see it with these different developments going on. They seem to be involved in many things. They're like, I saw the Peckish Pig up here with that other development. This doesn't seem to make quite sense to me that why these businesses are being colluded with the city. Is the city doing an arms-length deal with many of these businesses when there's problems? And leasing these parking spaces is troubling in that sense, too. What's going on here? Because you're tying yourself up. Either these people should buy these parking spaces, as I suggested, pay the full freight for the money, and give us the more than $100,000, probably 300,000 or 400,000 or more, to own the parking on a yearly basis, maybe more than that even once a real analysis is done. Because why should we really tie up our parking? And there was a comment made about 1987 here, and I'm going to have to start foiling some information, but Northwestern owns a huge parcel of land behind the parking garage, and I'd like to understand why that hasn't been developed. And basically, the parking garage may be part of that reason. I don't know the story. So I think we need to understand what's going on here with our money. As I keep on saying, the city seems reluctant to do the kind of financial analysis it needs to do. I've talked to you a year about the water department, and you're probably tired of that. The mess of the water plant is huge. But I really think this issue on the maple garage is really of great concern, and I think you, as council members, need to understand what is going on at that whole site there with that vacant land of Northwestern's, and why, if it's going to get developed, then you're going to need the garage. And why isn't it being developed by Northwestern? Some of you ought to be asking the questions, because it's sitting vacant. It's a prime piece of real estate in the downtown. You could put plenty of, pretty, several big buildings on it, and it's sitting vacant with surface parking next to the big garage that is empty. So what is going on, and why haven't you done anything? We do these silly little developments for coffee shops and things, but we have prime real estate sitting in the downtown. What's going on with it? So I think this council needs to ask some questions and start asking, where's the real money, and what's going on here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Siegel. I represent JPFO, Jews for Preservation of Firearms Ownership. I am the North Shore and North Suburban Coordinator. We have over 500 members in the North Shore and North Suburban area, including Evanston, Illinois, where we have a number of members, and I'm speaking on their behalf. I'm speaking regarding two ordinances, the proposed 6-0-15, and then the multifamily concern. I'm not a resident of Evanston, nor is my opposition, Ms. Stonebeck, so let me just point that out. But we do have members that I'm representing in Evanston. And we're very concerned that you would bring up such an ordinance, first of all, because there have been no attempts to open a range or a gun shop in Evanston, and furthermore, your map restricting the locations is basically a de facto denial of a right which has been adjudicated under Isell versus Chicago, in which case the city of Chicago lost big time and cost them a tremendous amount of money. Again, this will probably be litigated, and I'm sure the residents of Evanston do not want to pay legal fees for a moot point. Basically, a moot point being that there has never been, and I doubt if there ever will be, an attempt to open a gun shop or a range in Evanston. So what's the purpose of this ordinance, other than another feel-good ordinance which are challenging constitutional rights and court decisions? So I would urge that you just not approve the ordinance or table it and forget it. On the other issue, report concerning firearm regulations and multifamily residences in the city of Evanston. This has also been adjudicated in federal court regarding rental units, condominiums, and public housing units, and there's an absolute constitutional right, under strict scrutiny, to allow citizens to own firearms. One cannot deny the ownership or possession of firearms in private dwellings. Again, this would open the city of Evanston to litigation should they attempt to deny citizens of Evanston in their private dwelling the right to keep and bear arms. So again, on both of these issues, there's no purpose to it. You know, one meets in a city council for a purposeful agenda and a purposeful meeting. So in these two cases, I would just say, forget it.
Mr. Siegel, I need you to wrap up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Isell. I'm here in the role as one of the co-producers of the local TV show, The Reporters. Like to wish all of you a happy Women's History Month. Within the past hour, about 100,000 cable homes in the area surrounding Evanston have watched, came on at 7:30, a documentary that we created in collaboration with the Northwestern Archives and the Women's Club of Evanston. Basically, it is a commemoration of the 125-year history of the Women's Club, which occurred last year. The area that the documentary's been viewed in basically goes along the lake from Evanston up to Lake Cook Road, out to 365, and down to an area parallel with, right underneath O'Hare Airport, and comes back to the lake. It's about 750,000 population, and I also am steeped in metrics. I believe that there were probably some of the 100,000-plus cable homes that were watching it. This was a great project because it involved seven collaborating organizations in the community, including the Northwestern Archives, which is, has been gracious enough to house the 125-year record of the Women's Club. And the Women's Club last year had commissioned a woman to write a book on the history of the Women's Club, and so we were able to benefit from the 140 archival photos that were created from the research on that book, and that's in the documentary. I want to invite you and other members of the community to come to the Evanston Public Library on March 28, where we're going to be having a screaming, a screening, excuse me, a screaming time, a screening and a discussion, which will be led by the senior members of the Women's Club. This is a representation of what we call a multi-touch, multi-platform approach that we've been working on for two years, where we hope not only to reach people within the community of Evanston on significant public affairs and cultural issues, but we also hope to take the resources that we take for granted here in Evanston and share them with people in the surrounding area. And I do hope you all have a chance to come out and see the video. You can also view it on YouTube. It's in high definition, and I urge you all to like The Reporters on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Alderman Fisk has a question.
At what time at the library on the 28th?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's at 1:00. It's this Saturday afternoon.
Thank you.
Please come.
I think we figured it out. It's Mike.
Hi, I'm Mike Weissman. I'm on the Board of Directors of Illinois State Rifle Association. First, I'd like to congratulate the city council on deciding to shelve the concern about trying to regulate or restrict firearms in multifamily dwellings. That's a good move as far as the zoning or the ordinances in order to try to restrict retail firearms establishment, first by tying them to the existence of a shooting range. I don't know if that's a tactic that's worked before. I wish you lots of luck with that. The ability to buy the implements needed in order to exercise a fundamental civil right, and then the ability to get education and practice with those, those are already well dealt with in federal court. And I'm assuming that there's just, there's no one here that actually wants to put a range or retail firearms establishment in Evanston, although I don't understand the need for, I don't understand the need for the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speakers are Erin Nugent, Lauren Barsky, Denise Stoneback, and Minku Sharma.
Hi, my name is Erin Nugent. I hadn't originally planned to talk, so excuse me if I feel a little, seem a little nervous. As I said, my name is Erin Nugent. I'm a resident here in Evanston. I live in Evanston. I was born in Evanston. St. Francis Hospital, I lived in Evanston. I went to preschool. I went to Orington School. I went to Haven, King Lab, and ETHS. I've graduated from ETHS. And like I said, I live here now with my husband and my two kids, one who goes to preschool in Evanston, and the other who is in a District 65 elementary school. And when I was made aware of this zoning ordinance that came up, that was something about the verbiage being that 250 yards away from a firing range or retail establishment, 250 yards, I'm sorry, feet away from a public park, a school, or a child daycare facility, I became concerned because I started doing in my head, well, how far is 250 feet? And I used to run track, and so I started thinking about how many times around a track is 250 feet. And I haven't been in ETHS for a while, obviously, but we used to have to run 10 times, the indoor track. This isn't the outdoor big track. The indoor track, we would have to run 10 times for one mile. And so I said, I wonder how much 250 feet is in miles? And it's less than 5 hundredths of a mile. So basically, it was my sprint if I was running around the track. It's less than one time around an indoor track at ETHS. And that concerned me. Even if it was 500 feet, it's still a concern. That's less than, again, still less than one time around a track as far as distance. And although I've been, my family has been personally affected by gun violence. I lost a cousin's gun violence, and so obviously, it became, if it was not before, an issue for me. The idea of it coming home to Evanston really, obviously, brings that up, and I just wanted to say my piece and for you all to take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. As some of you may know, this issue was held in... As some of you may know, this issue was held in AMPW committee, and I thank the members of that committee for making that decision. I want to talk, I am here as an Evanston resident who lives within walking distance of all the theoretical locations, within a few blocks of the two that are within a few blocks of Evanston Township High School. I'm also a lawyer, and I'm here to talk about some of the cases that have been mentioned and mischaracterized by others that spoke earlier. So first, I think it's important to understand what the zoning requirement or proposed zoning at issue is. It's that a firearm dealer can't be located in any district other than I-1, 2, or 3 district, and not within 250 feet of any R-1, R-2, R-3 district, or 250 feet of any school, child daycare facility, or public park. That's the proposed Evanston ordinance. I think we can look to Chicago's ordinance for guidance, especially because in the Isell case, it was not a big loss for Chicago. It was actually a split decision, which means that the plaintiffs, including the Illinois State Rifle Association, won on some issues. Chicago won on some issues. Notably, Chicago won on the zoning regulation, which is stricter than the proposed Evanston ordinance, specifically in Chicago. And again, this was upheld by the Northern District of Illinois six months ago, recent decision. Chicago's ordinance, a range may not be located within 100 feet of another range, 500 feet of any residential zoning district, or 500 feet of any pre-existing school, daycare facility, place of worship, premises licensed for retail sale of liquor, children's activity facility, library, museum, or hospital. Much broader than what the proposed Evanston ordinance is, and again, withstood a constitutional challenge by the Illinois State Rifle Association, who we have a member here of, and other plaintiffs. The other thing I want to talk about quickly is this idea of a de facto ban, which was mentioned. That was also brought up by the plaintiffs in Isell. This aspect of the decision was not mentioned by the speakers who spoke earlier. It was rejected by the court. A de facto ban is essentially the argument that your ordinance isn't unconstitutional, but the cumulative effect of all your ordinances effectively bans a gun range. Plaintiffs in Isell brought that up, and I want to read you what the court says, again quoting from the opinion. "The plaintiffs seem to contend that even if the regulations are constitutional individually, their cumulative impact creates a de facto ban on firing ranges within Chicago."
Lauren, I need you to wrap up.
30 seconds. "The court dismisses this argument because the plaintiffs failed to adequately develop the contention with either facts or case law. No support in the law for that argument. It failed." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor Tisdale and members of the city council, city manager, corporation council, good evening. Thank you for introducing the firearms ordinance earlier in APW. I'd like to say a few words about the ordinance. While I don't currently live in Evanston, I was born here, and I have close ties to this community. I hope I never see a gun shop or gun range in Evanston. It would bring more guns to this community, and with more guns comes more gun violence. Today in the United States, we already have a public health crisis on our hands with the level of gun violence. With 310 million guns in America, more than 100,000 people are shot or killed with a gun every year. In fact, in 2011, gun deaths outpaced motor vehicle deaths in 14 states and in the District of Columbia. If we compare the U.S. to other developed countries, no other country in the world comes anywhere close to the guns and gun deaths in the United States. I appreciate Evanston's proactive approach to the issue. However, again, I am here to urge you to look at the ordinance and make sure it is the strongest ordinance possible. I believe there are some things that can be strengthened, and in particular, the distance of a gun range to a school. 250 feet is not enough. The concern over proximity of schools to a gun shop and range is not a new issue. It has been a valid concern expressed by communities across the country. And this is because, besides the obvious safety concerns, a gun range near a school sends a message to children about the acceptability of guns in our society. Gun violence affects children's and teens disproportionately. A child or teen dies or is injured from guns every 30 minutes. Think about how many children have been injured or killed in the duration of this meeting. In the United States, guns kill twice as many children and young people than cancer. So why would we want to feed this fire and allow our children to think that guns are safe for young people? As we heard from the previous speaker, Chicago's ordinance provides that ranges may only be located in a manufacturing district as a special use within 500 feet of any residential zoning district or pre-existing school. This ordinance was upheld by the Northern District of Illinois. Cook County's ordinance is even stronger. It provides that no deadly weapons may, dealer may operate within one mile of any public or private school or park. With everything we know about guns and gun violence, we do not want to pass a weak law that we will regret down the road. We want to pass the strongest ordinance possible. If there are concerns about potential litigation for pro-gun groups, let me say this. The Law Center to Prevent Gun Violence has tracked every Second Amendment case since the 2008 Heller decision, and approximately 96% of the Second Amendment claims have been rejected by the courts. I think we hear about the fear of litigation because of the many bogus claims and thinly veiled threats by gun groups. But the reality is that good regulation-
Renee, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. Good regulation of guns is good policy and necessary for public safety. So we all know that federal and state regulation of guns is weak. That is why it is so important for municipalities to keep their communities safe by passing the strongest laws possible. I'm happy that it was held in committee earlier this evening, and I thank you. I look forward to seeing the strengthened ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. Hi. I'm not here to talk about guns. I'm here to talk about pedicabs. I'm going to keep this kind of brief. My name is Minku Sharma. I, I'm a pedicab driver in Chicago. I'm also the co-founder of the Chicago Pedicab Association. So I just wanted to address the pedicab ordinance that we found out about. I, I actually found out about this just a few hours ago, and I was, I was just at home. So I decided like, oh, maybe I should come up here and say something. So I just wrote a few, a few things down, some concerns I have about it. So I guess, I'm not sure if there's going to be a vote tonight about the ordinance, but is there? No?
Sir, the, the committee that considered it took no action, so the item's currently not moving forward.
Okay. Well, is my, are my comments going to be relevant? So I'm not sure what's-
You're certainly welcome to speak, but just to let you know that the item, the item is not be moving forward this evening.
Okay. Well, I can, I can put up-
You're here. Why don't you tell us what you have to tell us?
Sure. Well, my first, my first point was do not pass the ordinance today, so that's-
Well, you won that one.
Great. Awesome. And some of the reasons why, number one, it seems to me that there, whoever, I guess it was the Alderman, Alderman Grover who wrote it, no one talked to pedicab drivers about this, as far as I know. So I think you have to have our input about this before you pass a law about us. As far as I know, there's no pedicab industry in Evanston. The only pedicabers that work in Evanston are from Chicago. We only come up here to work at Northwestern football games, and there's only about six or seven games per year, but they're very important to us that we get to work those. The Chicago, as you know, Chicago regulated pedicabs last summer, and we, we actually, it's been going on for years. We actually had years and years of input and meetings with, with the Chicago government, City Council and Alderman and the business department there about, you know, our, our perspective on the ordinance, and we want, we would like to do the same thing here in But some of the problems I have with, from, from the Evanston ordinance are similar to what we have, with the problems we have with the Chicago ordinance. Number one, it's going to create, it's going to result in loss of jobs. It's not going to incentivize people to actually drive, drive a pedicab here. It's too expensive, the licensing fees, not so much the licensing fees, but-
You need to wrap up.
The other things, the FBI background check, fingerprints, physical exam, drug test. I've gone through all of this to get my, my licensing, my license in Chicago. It's like, we're going to have to do the same thing again for Evanston, and we only work here six or seven times out of the year. I don't see the incentive, so it's like you're going to kill an industry that barely exists.
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey.
Alderman Burris and I want to make it clear to you, we're not sure you understand. We have sent this away and said that we don't want to think about this for about a year. So don't create a problem where there isn't one. There is no ordinance. There's no further discussion. We might talk to your association to get some input, but as of now, there's not going to be a law.
Okay.
Never be late to a legislative body.
All right. Well, then I would just say, like, I would look forward to speaking with members of the city council about this later on, so have a good day.
Perfect.
And sir, 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 before you leave, if you, if Mr. Williams Kinsel's going to get your contact information so we can be in touch with you, thank you.
That concludes, that concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
I think some people want to talk.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead. He's a part of the association, right? He said was, would they be interested in coming to Evanston other than for sporting events, maybe during the summer? We'd like to know that, because that was a question that came up in committee.
Yeah. I mean, here's the thing, like, I mean, maybe, maybe. You'd have to give us a really good reason to come up here, besides Northwestern football.
Oh, okay. Well, forget it.
God. What did July break?
The consent agenda, please, Alderman.
You never know what you're going to hear here. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. Asking for your approval of the minutes, February 23rd. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening for a very long meeting, and we're recommending the payroll in the amount of $2,953,292.19. The bills through March 10, $2,440,96.4. Credit card activity, $150,449.84. Your approval is requested for sole source renewal of the annual Harris Utility Billing Software Maintenance and Support Agreement through February 28, 2016, in the amount of $42,276.57. Approval is requested for the Cured and Placed Pipe Sewer Rehab Contract B with Her, Her, Her Construction in the amount of $151,109. Approval with Michael's Construction Corporation for the 2015 Cured and Placed Pipe Spotline Sewer Rehab in the amount of $28,620. Contract renewal is requested with Havy Communications for emergency lighting and sirens for one year in the amount of $68,973.60. Approval is also requested for a contract renewal with, with tire service for specialty tire, tire repair services in the amount of $27,233. Green Bay Road Landscape Maintenance Contract needs approval, and that is with Landscape Concepts Management, Inc., in the amount of $24,194, which is a decrease of 2.5% from the previous year funding. Approval of emergency snow hauling equipment rental from KLF for trucks and drivers to remove snow from February 2 through February 5 in the amount of $45,000, and no, in the, let's see, for $59,687.50. Sorry about that. Approval for the recommendations for final locations, that's off the consent agenda, will be addressed by the committee chair. Mayor Tisdale and the Environment Board and Staff recommend city council adoption of Resolution 11R15 opposing construction of a nuclear waste repository in the Great Lakes Basin. Resolution 13R15 amending the purpose and composition of the Transportation and Parking Committee to better reflect the multimodal needs and policy topics in Evanston, and increases committee membership to nine with an additional member from the city council. We ask your approval, along with Mayor Tisdale, for adoption of Resolution 24R15 supporting Northwest Municipal Conference 2015 Legislative Program. Resolution 25R15 is requested and adopts the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. For action also tonight is Resolution 29R15 authorizing the manager to negotiate and execute an easement agreement with OMS/AR Evanston LLC for sheeting easement for construction along Chicago Avenue and Main Street in the public right of way. We ask your approval for Resolution 30R15, which authorizes the manager to submit a Surface Transportation Program application phase for the Howard Street improvements from Dodge to Custer. This Phase II engineering construction and, construction engineering is estimated to be $3,525,600. STP funds would be 70% of the total project cost, or $2,349,060. City local share is $921,9, sorry, these numbers are so big, $921,540, and must be budgeted in the capital improvement plan. Adoption, this is for introduction, adoption of Ordinance 35015 revising regulations regarding use of leaf blowers in the city of Evanston is for introduction. For introduction also is the adoption of 6015 to amend firearm regulations consistent with the state and federal law. That, that's for introduction. A report concerning firearm regulations has been held. It's not going to be placed on file because of some changes. Ordinance 11015 is for introduction, has to do with addressing the pedicab, and that has been, that'll be addressed by the committee chair. I think we just had a discussion about that. Adoption of Ordinance 31015 is for introduction and amends hazardous material cost recovery program to reflect current and updated costs for providing emergency services in certain situations. For introduction also is Ordinance 32015 increasing the number of Class T liquor licenses for Carter Investments doing business as Feast In and By 1601 Simpson Street. This increases the number from two to three. Approval is requested for the introduction of Ordinance 33015 amending the code to increase the number of Class D licenses from 50 to 51 to permit issuance to Blaze Illinois Store V LLC doing businesses Blaze Pizza 1737 Sherman Avenue. The Ordinance 34015 increases the number of Class S1 licenses for the Women's Club 1702 from zero to one is for introduction, and the committee requests suspension of the rules, so this can be acted on tonight. Let's see. Ordinance 126014 increasing the number of Class F liquor licenses for Highland Park CVS doing businesses CVS Pharmacy at 3333 Central from 8 to 9. Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and Ordinance 19015 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 27015 is for action and grants a special use for- Ordinance 27015 is for action and grants a special use for commercial indoor recreation for Foster Dance Studio at 915 Foster. The Housing and Community Development Act Committee recommends the following. Resolution 27 R15 approves the city's 2015-19 Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan. Resolution 28 R15 approving the city's 2015 Action Plan and adopting the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnership and Emergency Solutions Grants Program Budget for 2015. And Resolution 26 R15 amends the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizes the reallocation of prior and unexpended funds. Lastly, Economic Development Committee recommends approval of applications for the 2015 Evanston Great Merchants Grant, and there's a list of the businesses. The Madam Mayor has not recommended any appointments, so therefore I move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Tindham, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris.
Seven to nothing.
Seven to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes. A for approval of the recommendations for final regions for the Divvy Bike Stations. The committee approved the recommendations with a couple amendments. The amendment for removing the number eight region location of the Divvy Bike Station and staff, which is in the eighth ward along Howard, the staff will work with the ward alderman to find an alternative location for that number eight region. And the number six region, which is in Ward Two, staff will also work with the ward alderman to ensure proper location. So, we're not moving with outside the overall region, we're just narrowing down where they'll be located within those regions.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. I have one question. Given the way that the governor is taking grants away that we once had, are we sure we're getting these?
Madam Mayor, this is coming from funds from outside the state of Illinois, so we remain hopeful.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. It's been moved and seconded to pass the resolution as amended for approval of the approval of the recommendations for final regions for Divvy Bike Stations. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Tindham, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris.
Seven to nothing.
Seven to nothing, the motion passes.
A13, this is Ordinance 11-0-15, adding Title III, Chapter 31, Pedicabs. The committee chose not to move this forward, but has asked that the city manager and the police department monitor the pedicabs during the next year, and that we revisit the ordinance in 2016.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Well, it's not to do nothing with it, so-
It's to do nothing with it, I just wanted to explain-
We'll do nothing with it. Thank you.
Explain what we're doing, nothing. That concludes my report.
Does that conclude your report? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Don't we have to move A17 for approval tonight?
Oh, sorry, Alderman Fisk?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm sorry about that, Judy.
We did suspend the rules, but we have to-
We suspended the rules. Yeah. So, A17, Ordinance 34-0-15, increase the number of Class S1 liquor licenses for the Women's Club of Evanston at 1702 Chicago Avenue. We're asking for suspension of rules this evening.
We already did.
We suspended them.
I'm sorry, asking for approval.
For approval. Second, thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Tindham, I'm sorry, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris. Seven to zero.
The motion passes. Alderman Fisk, could we please have planning and development?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P1 is Ordinance 19015, the planned development at 1571 Maple Avenue. It was moved for introduction. The vote was four to one. I was the one, and intend to vote against it, so.
No approval?
All right. It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 19015 for a planned development at 1571 Maple.
For introduction.
For introduction. Ah, okay. Then we don't, we'll vote on it. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Tindham, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Six to one.
Six to one, the motion passes. And Alderman Braithwaite, would you, you don't have anything on Human Services? And that gets us to-
And I have nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
I noticed, Alderman Holmes, congratulations. I hope you thanked Alderman Burris for returning.
Absolutely.
All right. We are at call of the wards, and I forgot one thing in the mayor's public announcements. I forgot to say that the Haven Band Concert was absolutely wonderful.
Yay.
So, Alderman Fisk. Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This past Saturday, there were a series of conversations around entrepreneurialism and particular focus on the black community. Unfortunately, I missed the event during the noon portion, but I did have a chance to go to, this is the same weekend of the Gibbs-
Oh, the Morrison-Gibbs?
Yes, presentation. But there was a very good meeting at Yo Fresh Yogurt's with a number of businesses that were represented, so that's something that I want to pay very close attention to moving forward. And I shared with the group that on March 27th, we're going to host our third annual procurement 101, and we've been working very closely with our purchasing staff to make sure that we have a good event. That's going to be here at the city of Evanston. I believe it starts at 8:00 a.m. We should have information up on the website for businesses to register, and it's an opportunity to learn more about the procurement process with the city of Evanston, Northwestern District 65, District 202, and Rotary International. So, I encourage all businesses, all local businesses, to come out and participate if you'd like to get more information about how to do business with those organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
My only request is that the, not to insult the press, but just to make sure that they remember to be clear in the distinction between introduction and passage of something, because there have been instances in the past where a vote on an introduction has inferred that something's passed, so I don't want to cause undue panic for any of the items that were introduced, but have not been taken action on, so.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the occasion to attend the Post 7186 auxiliary luncheon on Saturday at Fleetwood, which was absolutely great. And one of the things that they had asked me, well, they asked me to actually be the speaker, but they'd asked me about services for veterans in Evanston, and what do we actually do? And I think we've had this conversation before. I know Alderman Rainey had pointed out the services that are offered by the VA. But, one of the things that, Mayor, I was able to share with them is that we did do a proclamation for one of the young men who had done services in Iraq, and I think it was Afghanistan, I can't remember, but anyway, that we would be certainly willing to, if there were other young people coming back to Evanston, that we would certainly want to welcome them with that kind of proclamation for the city of Evanston to show our appreciation. I think that's one of the things that they're concerned about, is that people, the veterans, need to know where we stand, and I explained that, you know, you're always at the Memorial Day service as well as the services in November, so, but it was a really, it was a nice luncheon.
Well, the one thing that I hope we can tell them is that the reason that we did honor that young man is that, once we heard about him, of course, we all wanted to honor him, but his mother told us, so-
Yes, somebody has to tell us.
Somebody has to tell us, and if they would please tell us, we would do that. It was very moving, and veterans came and saluted and all of that, and I thought it was a terrific thing to do, but we need more mothers, aunts, uncles, anybody who'll tell us.
And I did, I did explain it, that we can't do it unless we do know. The other thing is that the fifth ward meeting will be next Thursday, March the 19th, and our special guests will be all of the candidates from running for school board, both District 65 and 202. The election is on April the 7th. This is very important election, I think, in terms of the things that are happening on the state level where our schools are concerned, the testing, and also with the budget. So, please, if you want to come, you're welcome to join us on the 19th at Fleetwood at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Alderman Tindham?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last, next to the last three items on the consent agenda tonight were Community Development Block Grant Committee issues, and I don't know if people take a look at those reports, but they are extremely complex and time-consuming, and even for some members of the committee, it's very difficult to understand the rules and regulations and how our staff puts it all together, and we fly, we have flying colors, we pass with flying colors. So, I wanted to thank Sarah Flax and April Jacobs, as well as the committee, the CDBG Committee, which is a fabulous committee, and, you know, we're meeting tomorrow night as opposed to our regular meeting on the 17th, so I just want to mention that. And it is a public hearing, so people need to come and tell us what they think.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Thank you. I want to thank the residents that have let me know about the problems with the U.S. Mail service delivery. It's been a huge problem in, you know, the ninth ward as well as the eighth ward, and I wanted to let you know that Gilde Capricio, our government liaison, has reached out to the post office as well as Representative Shakowsky's office, and we will continue to follow up with both those offices and hopefully get this situation rectified soon, because it is a, it's been a problem for months, and I don't know if anybody else is experiencing or getting calls, but it's a real problem. So, we wanted to let you know that we are aware of it, and we are trying, we are taking action. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't know whose light went on first. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you. The mail problem is, has been seriously, a serious concern in the sixth ward for a couple of years now, but it has gotten much, much worse in the last few months, and I have had a good conversation with our new postmaster, relatively new postmaster, and she has great ideas, but she doesn't get a lot of support. So, I think it's important that we reach out to our legislators at the federal level and let them know that she needs help, too. It's not, it's not simply the office, the postman and others at the post office, it's really just being so poorly staffed, understaffed, and the resources aren't coming their way. So, if we can put pressure on that way, that will help a lot, and I think if you want to, the postmaster is very approachable. If you'd like to talk to her about some issues, she'll also tell you what she's trying to do to improve things in the meantime.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, could you just remind us, the Fountain Square Visioning Meeting has been moved to March 11th, I think, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Could you, do I have that right?
Just a second, I'll call up the proper information.
While you're doing that, Alderman Holmes?
I was just going to say on the mail, I know there was seven straight days that we did not get mail on my block, and I, one of the things is when you call the post office, you can't, you can't talk to a person until after 9:30 in the morning. That's one of the really big issues. They will tell you, to a supervisor or someone that might be able to help you. And it's, it, the, we noticed, we began to notice the real difference in terms of just days skipping, probably beginning in November, and it, you know, has continued, and it's really sad. So, every time we're missing, you know, if I don't, I just expect to get mail every day, because it's junk mail if nothing else, and so when I don't get mail for two days, I know something is wrong, and usually they just don't have anyone to deliver it, and that's really sad.
Yes.
It's citywide, I'm pretty sure it's citywide.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to follow up with this, Capricio, perhaps we could have the postmaster or representative from the Postal Service come to a council meeting soon to talk more about this. I'm happy to make that invitation.
Do you have an answer for Alderman Fisk?
Yes. Fountain Square Renovation Project Open House, March the 11th. The place of the shops in Sherman Plaza located at 1614 Sherman Avenue will include an open house concept viewing from 6:00 p.m. to 6:45, followed by a presentation and community discussion from 6:45 to 8:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for it?
I do. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, and C21.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.